So everyone isn't.
Yeah, so it's not a brand-new rookie team coming in.
That's how we keep the tax rate low.
We'll be starting in 10 seconds. Good evening. I'm Rebecca Hawthorne, President of the League of Women Voters of the Wayzata Plymouth Area. I'd like to welcome our candidates, our audience and our viewers on behalf of the League of Women Voters, Wayzata Plymouth Area. The League of Women Voters is a 104-year-old volunteer, nonpartisan organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. It is our purpose in sponsoring forums such as these to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss face-to-face the issues that are important to you. This is a nonpartisan forum. We ask that campaign buttons or campaign T-shirts not be worn, nor signs, nor literature be distributed in this room. Please silence your electronic devices. And now I'd like to introduce you to our moderator for this evening's forum, Lillian Hostetter of Plymouth and the League of Women Voters, Wayzata Plymouth Area member.
Thank you, Rebecca. Good evening. Tonight's forum is provided to give you the opportunity to learn about the candidates running for the Medina City Council. There is never enough time to cover all of the issues in a setting such as this. If your questions were not addressed, feel free to contact the candidate directly. The League of Women Voters posts complete, unedited recording of its forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Only the full, unedited recording may be used by other persons and organizations. The rules for this evening's forums are as follows. Candidates will be allowed an opening statement with a maximum of one minute to state their experiences, platform, and objectives. A question-and-answer period will follow the opening statement. The answers will be confined to one minute unless designated by the moderator. Opening statements will be given in alphabetical order by office being sought, and questions will be answered in a rotating order. A 15-second warning will be given to the candidates. The timekeeper is right over there. Candidates, please finish your sentence quickly when you see the stop sign, or you will be interrupted. The candidates will also be given a two-minute closing statement. No reference of a personal nature will be tolerated. A person's public record may be examined, but not their character. This forum is made available to encourage the voting public to, quote, "focus on the issues and not on personalities." We ask there be no demonstrations in support or opposition to the candidates or their positions, and that their candidate be allowed their full time to get their points across. The public has been encouraged to submit questions online in advance of this forum. For those in the audience, if you have a question, write it on a three-by-five card available from our volunteers and raise your hand to pick it up. Audience questions will be taken for the first 30 minutes of the forum. The timekeeper will alert the moderator when 30 minutes has elapsed. Questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used. Those that fall in the same general area may be consolidated. Okay, now to the forum itself here. The city of Medina has two city council seats on the ballot this fall. There is no League of Women Voters forum scheduled for the city of Medina mayoral race because the candidate, Todd Albers, is running unopposed. The candidates running for two seats on the Medina City Council are Mary Morrison, Chris Peterson, and Braden Rem. We will begin the introductory remarks with Mary Morrison.
Thank you. Is this on? Yeah, thank you. Should I start? Thank you. Good evening. My name is Mary Morrison, and I'm running for Medina City Council. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this forum, and for all of you taking the time to attend this evening or watch this presentation. I've been a resident of Medina for 11 years and live on a small farm in the rural part of the city. I am currently serving my eighth year on the Parks Commission, two years as chair. My background is as a lawyer working with nonprofit and community organizations. I have also led numerous community and charitable boards. If elected, I will bring my legal expertise and problem-solving abilities to the council, and will be its only member with a legal background, the only member from the southern part of Medina, and the only woman. I believe it is important for the city council to represent or to reflect a broad cross-section of the community. I appreciate how collaborative and efficient Edina's government is. If elected, I will provide strong, independent leadership.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next, Chris Peterson.
Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for offering us this opportunity to speak on behalf of ourselves representing the great city of Medina. My name is Chris Peterson, and I'm running for Medina City Council after 25 years of actively engaging in the community. I've spent the last eight years on the HOA Board of the Fields of Medina Neighborhood, including six of those as Board President. I started working, actually, in the city when I was a teenager for our family's local business. For the past 10 years, I've had the honor and privilege of actually interviewing and getting to know Medina residents and businesses through Medina Publication. And with 15 seconds left, I will bring a level of nuanced experience from both business and residential volunteering, as well as being a family history for the past 50 years. Thank you.
Thank you. And Braden Rem.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Braden Rem, and I'm running for city council. My family and I have been proud residents of Medina for over a decade, and I'm deeply invested in our community's future. My four years of service on the Planning Commission, where I've chaired for the last two years, has given me the opportunity to influence development in a way that respects our community's character and needs. Professionally, I bring 17 years of experience at a Fortune 100 company, where I lead a large team in global sourcing, responsible for $1.2 billion business. In my role, I work daily to balance competing priorities and stakeholders while driving critical business results. This blend of professional and civic experience gives me a unique perspective on management and financial stewardship in our city. Importantly, I am not personally involved in any act of property development in Medina. This allows me to focus solely on what's important for our community as we approach the 2050 Comprehensive Plan, which will set the pace of development for the city. I'm dedicated to preserving our open spaces, ensuring balanced growth, and representing your interests with transparency. Thank you for your support.
And thank you. Now we will be starting the questions. The order of this round will be Braden Rem, then Chris Peterson, then Mary Morrison. The question is, what is your top priority for Medina as a candidate for city council? How would you address it if elected? So, go ahead, Braden.
Thank you, Lillian. If elected, my top priority for the city council is to make sure that we balance growth within the requirements, the comprehensive plan. Medina is a wonderful community. It's a beautiful community that we all love, with open spaces, parks, and all of those things. And we want to preserve that and make sure that Medina remains the place that we love to live in. And so, if elected, I would work to make sure that, as we're working with the Met Council to implement that plan, that we're protecting those things and that we're leveraging creative tactics to make sure that we protect our community in that way and preserve our open spaces and parks.
Thank you. And Chris?
If elected to Medina City Council, I will, as I have done for the last 10 years, continue to look out for the interests of the residents by engaging with them. Something I'm most proud of is actually listening and asking questions. And through my experience, not only navigating the nuances of a local neighborhood, but for the city as a whole, it's incredibly important that we have a level of controlled development that's not just looking out for the next five or 10 years, but looking out for the next 40 years, and development along the Highway 55 corridor in a controlled manner, while still protecting south of Medina, which is the heart of Medina and where we grow, and simply have a history that has been around for as long as I can remember. And certainly, I'm a little nervous here right now, so I seek to protect Medina's rural heritage and also maintain controlled growth.
Okay, thank you. And candidate Mary Morrison.
Thank you. It sounds like we all are, you know, on the same page in terms of the priorities. I think Medina is a unique community. We moved here because we wanted the rural character that was not too far out and appreciated, wanted its... Medina city government has done a great job to date of preserving that, and that's partly because the members of the city council have been, in large part, independent people who are not involved in the development of Medina. And to me, it's important that we maintain an independent city council and protect Medina's rural character while meeting the needs of the Met Council and the 2050 plan that's coming down the pike. I think we've done a great job to date, and I'd like to continue with that.
So, the next round of questions, the order will be Chris Peterson, then Mary Morrison, and then Braden Rem. The question is, the vision statement of the city of Medina states, Medina seeks to provide a safe, healthy, and sustainable community for present and future residents through efficient and effective service while retaining its rural heritage and promoting recreational, residential, and business activities. How will you balance the vision of the city with the desires of the residents, developers, and other stakeholders when making decisions regarding the future development of the city? And, go ahead.
Thank you. I think that's a great question, and balancing that is, you have to look back at Medina's history and see that the community was developed with its rural heritage intact for as long as it has been. And in order to maintain that, I believe that we actually are going to come up to a point very soon, given the recent high growth of residential developments, that will, as that starts to slow, per the comp plan, we're going to need to continue to bring in revenue to maintain that economic stability. And protecting the south of Medina and the rural residential homes, it will require additional revenue from what I believe will come from controlled development along the commercial sector of the corridor of Highway 55. I believe that that will balance not just the budget, but provide the recreation and the hospitality that I frankly believe is severely lacking these days in Medina, and would all agree that doing so on 55 is a way to balance that. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Mary. Mary Morrison.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Sorry, I thought it was your reverse order.
Yeah.
I think it's important that we do preserve a safe, healthy community. We are successful in doing that to date with a comparatively low tax rate compared to the surrounding communities, so I think we can do that without growth, other than growth that Medina sees as fitting within its own vision. To that end, Medina was far sighted enough, the city governments, to purchase a piece of property along 55 and Willow, that then the city can decide, get out in front of development, and decide what happens to that property, what serves the needs of the Medina residents to date. Is that more housing? Is it recreational opportunities? Is it retail? Is it more park space? And that will give an opportunity for the community to have some input on that. And I think that's a great example of the way that we can continue living out the vision that Medina has by... Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, candidate Braden.
Thank you. You know, thinking about how we will balance that vision between residents and development interests, you know what I think about is, you know, drawing on my experience as somebody who's balancing competing interests all the time in my professional job. One of the things that I think is going to be the most important is to continue to provide the right growth opportunities along Highway 55. But more importantly than that, as I've been out on the campaign trail or out campaigning, I've been listening to residents. I've been asking for their priorities. I've been looking to hear what's important to them. And as I see it, it's really important to bring those voices into the city council and make sure that we're hearing what our residents have to say. At the same time, the city has done a great job of long-term infrastructure planning, and I think that's something that we should continue to do, which will help balance our budget and keep our tax rates low.
Great. The next round of questions, the order will be Braden Rem, then Chris Peterson, then Mary Morrison. What do you see as the greatest challenge to starting or growing a business in Medina and Hamel? What, if anything, should the role of city government be in attracting and supporting businesses?
Thank you. That's a great question. You know, I think there's a lot of challenges with, you know, starting a small business. It's a challenging thing to do. It takes a lot of energy and time. And I think as we look at how we can support that, it'll be really important to focus on the key areas like Uptown Hamel or potentially the property on Willow, where we can, you know, potentially support that development. And I think one of the hardest things in this city is just the residential density that's required to support certain kinds of businesses that we're looking for. And so it's going to be important to find the right places to balance that, at the same time, taking input from the community and understanding where that makes sense and how we can fit that within the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. And...
Can you repeat the question?
Of course. What do you see as the greatest challenge to starting or growing a business in Medina and Hamel? What, if anything, should the role of city government be in attracting and supporting businesses?
Well, as somebody who's been a part of a family business in Medina that's been around for 45 years, I certainly have watched it grow. As somebody who's also gone through the recent city process of, as I like to say, leading by example and building a commercial development with amenities that I believe Medina has needed, as somebody having gone through that, I think the city has done a wonderful job of balancing what the city needs are, from protecting the wetlands and ensuring that what we're building is something that the community wants. But it's going to be a challenge with any new business in any city, and I don't necessarily believe it's the city's job to help businesses through any sort of subsidies, but rather to encourage businesses by continuing to protect the quality of life we have here in Medina that has been attracting the right businesses for a long time.
Thank you. And candidate Mary.
One of the issues with Medina and business development is that the business areas open for development tend to be kind of, other than 55, Hamel is a little harder to get to. I think it's hopscotch around to find business opportunities. The low density of population here and the availability of higher-density areas elsewhere makes Medina maybe more challenging than some of the other communities. I think what the city has done and can do is, you know, through the planning process, be very careful about what kind of businesses make sense to develop in certain areas, and use the knowledge that the city has and city staff has to try to encourage development that's going to be successful in Medina, and work with people who want to start businesses to make sure that they can be successful.
Thank you. For the next round of questions, the order will be Mary Morrison, then Braden Rem, then Chris Peterson. The question is about public safety. What matters of public safety, if any, do you believe require change in city policy, ordinance, or funding, such as police recruitment and retention, pedestrian safety measures, traffic control, et cetera?
I think one of the challenges that Medina faces now, we spoke to the chief of police, and it's true here and in surrounding communities, is it's just a very difficult environment right now to recruit and retain qualified public safety officers, whether they're policemen, firemen, you know, community resource officers. So I think we have a great, experienced public safety staff, and the issue will be, as a lot of them have a lot of longevity, what comes along with that is that we have a lot of retirements coming up, and it's a matter of figuring out how we're going to fund that without getting into an arms race with surrounding communities for the same pool of applicants. I think we do a great job with the resources that we have, but I think that is one of the challenges Medina will face.
Thank you. Candidate Braden.
I'd agree. Our biggest challenge in Medina is just recruitment and retention of public safety police officers. There's not enough in the pipeline to fill retirements that are coming across the entire state, and so there's no silver bullet to solve this. One thing that I'm really happy to see is that the city has supported that budget. It's one of our biggest expenditures. It is our biggest expenditure in the budget, and we've also grown it proportionally year over year to make sure that we're bringing that support. I think, secondly, really important to listen to our police chief and to our officers and those who come before the city council with what their requests are, to take them seriously, but at the same time, as Mary alluded to, balancing that with the modest resources within a community of our size.
Candidate Chris?
Thank you, and I concur with both other candidates on some of their thoughts. I also think that we are, having hired a lot of people, young people, not just necessarily in public safety so much, but I think economically you do need to continue to offer a level of, you know, competitive compensation, which the city of Medina does. But I think more importantly, continuing to have a culture and a department that's attracting the type of young police officers that actually want to work on the Medina Police Force versus potentially some other cities. We have a really beautiful city. I've talked to a lot of police officers here, and they really like working in Medina. And I think leaning into what Medina offers, not just compensation-wise, but as a city as a whole, to raise a family or at least be working in, is something that the younger generation certainly puts a lot more value on than they used to.
Great. Thank you. For the next round of questions, the order will be Chris Peterson, then Mary Morrison, and Braden Rem. The question is, what is your perspective on hunting in Medina, considering both its rural, in the city's rural, character, and the concerns some residents have raised about safety and disturbances related to hunting activities?
Well, I'm not a hunter myself. I grew up with a father who was a pheasant hunter, and I know that Medina, just like their horse trails and a lot of other recreation that comes with living in a rural area that's growing, I think it's... That's a difficult one. I would actually say that personally, as a non-hunter, but the way I kind of look at city government, I would ask, I would propose that they're allowed to continue to hunt, especially given the type of city we live in. When you move to a city like Medina, the branding of Medina, if you will, is that a rural and a rural area with so few open spaces left. The hunting is something that I believe that people should be allowed to do. And making sure, though, to obviously answer to the active concerns of others and safety being a number-one priority. But audibly speaking, I'm not sure a gun being fired in Medina.
Thank you. Candidate Mary.
It's actually not a question I've thought about. I'm not a hunter. Where I live, there are people that hunt on adjacent property, but it's with the permission of the landowner. And as far as I know, there haven't been problems. I mean, it seems to me the role of the city and that would be making sure that people are aware and communicating as well as possible the rules of safe hunting, where you can shoot a gun in some areas of Medina and obviously not in others, and making sure that people understand the gun rules and perhaps offering or teaming up with someone to offer gun safety courses. I know there has been some of that in Medina. On the noise, I don't, I honestly haven't given enough thought to say. I know that there's a gun club near us, and there are times when repetitive noise is disturbing to people and people in Baker Park, so I don't really know how to solve that one.
Thank you. Candidate Braden.
You've got three non-hunters up here. I'm also not a hunter. But as I think about just the safety and, you know, balancing that with the disturbances, I think, you know, hunting is something that does respect and align with our rural character here in Medina. I think it's something that, you know, needs to be done in the appropriate places of the city. There's not a lot of space to do it in certain places of the city, and so that, you know, from a land use standpoint, somewhat solves itself. I think, at the end of the day, again, something to support, but as the city continues to grow, there are less and less places to do it. And so I think that'll just be, again, imperative for us to be really clear on what the regulations are, where it's able to be done, and just making sure, again, that property rights are being respected at the same time as the hunters' rights.
Great. Thank you. For the next round of questions, the order will be Braden Rem, Chris Peterson, then Mary Morrison. The question is about parks and recreation. Medina plans future parks and maintains and upgrades existing parks with different functions for recreation, sport, and exercise, and for enjoyment of nature. As council member, how will you assess the variety of recreational requests for Medina, such as parks and trails? And how will you work with and utilize the views and recommendations of your Parks Commission? And candidate Braden.
Great question. And I think, you know, our parks are one of our greatest assets in the city of Medina, and, you know, people like Mary have done a great service serving us on the Parks Commission. We have been really great at long-range planning within our parks and making sure that we're continuing to update amenities for a growing population and for changing interests within the population. And so I think really important to look at how do we continue to leverage input from the community and what's the most important, and make sure that, at the end of the day, our great assets that we have in our parks are able to be used. I also think that our trail system is something that's, you know, a really impressive part of Medina, and if elected, I want to advocate to continue to connect those trails and make sure that residents can use those to the fullest ability.
Thank you. And candidate Chris?
Years back, I know we were, actually, I was actively advocating and going door-to-door on behalf of the Three Rivers Park District as they were seeking to get Medina support behind the Diamond Head Lake Trail. I believe it was initially opposed 401, and it came back around the other way. I concur with Braden in terms of protecting those assets as one of the most valuable in the city. I got a call the other day from one of the Public Works, asking about one of our residents in the neighborhood requesting more mulch in the local neighborhood park. You go around, you look, you see if there's mulch needed, and you bring in more mulch. In terms of the value of the parks and continue to support it, I think that's a budget that potentially could use some boosting, because I know over time that's one that could be easily depleted.
Thank you. And candidate Mary.
Well, I would agree that Medina's parks and trails are one of its great assets. I think one of the challenges for Medina as it grows is providing the right variety and mix of assets. I mean, a lot of people are attracted and want nature, passive nature areas that they can explore, that support wildlife. Other people with young families that live closer together want places that they, with playground equipment, recreational opportunities, organized sports, pickleball, tennis courts. And I think the issue is providing those throughout the city, and the challenge is also maintaining those assets. As we grow, the cost to maintain them goes up, and I think that's something that the city has worked, and I would continue to work with the Parks Commission on getting recommendations and balancing that with the budget and the available financial resources for parks development and maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you. For the next... For the next round of questions, the order will be Mary Morrison, then Brayden Rem, then Chris Peterson. The question's about finance. What are your ideas for managing city revenues and expenses to maintain financial stability? And go ahead, Mary.
Well, I think we're fortunate that we have a healthy economy right now. I think one of the strengths of the city council has been to support staff, and the staff, as far as my experience with them has been, is that they work very leanly and efficiently in every area in the Medina. Staffing, working with the resources that are available, for example, on parks. The Public Works does a lot of the parks' construction and maintenance itself, rather than hiring that out to other people, and I think that's an example of Medina using its resources wisely to be able to do as efficiently as it can with, within the city budget. I think right now it has a healthy city budget, and I don't foresee challenges coming up, but again, I'm looking at it from the Parks Commission, and I don't have not been through the budgeting process myself.
Okay. Great. Candidate Brayden.
Thank you. You know, one of the things that is really impressive about this city is that we're one of a small amount of cities that has achieved a triple-A bond rating, and that's something that is really important to continue. And as we look at that, I think there's things like how we manage our resources. Mary mentioned our staff and the work that they do on their own that helps keep some of the costs down. I also think we have, you know, at the end of the day, stable reserve balances, we have healthy cash on hand, and that helps us start from a really strong position in finance. And then, you know, as I look at the challenges that are upcoming, I think the biggest one is, as we've grown our budget, that has come, you know, a lot because of home values going up in price. And so as that, you know, potentially stabilizes or changes, we'll have to be thoughtful about how we leverage the budget and how we balance those things.
Great. And candidate Chris.
Yes, I think, as I mentioned before, the growth in Medina recently, especially residential growth, has certainly given a boon to the city's reserves. I think that, that over time, as a businessperson, you can only cut costs enough to get to a point where you actually have to have stable and rising revenues, and there's, in my opinion, only a few ways to drive revenue. You're either raising taxes, you're cutting city staff budgets, or other areas that I don't believe anybody would want to have to do, or you're creating new streams of revenue. As a councilperson here, given my creative thinking and track record of problem-solving, unique problems over time, I believe continuing to properly develop the Highway 55 corridor is the largest opportunity to maintain long-term economic stability in the city of Medina while keeping taxes low.
Great. Thank you. And just as a general note, 30 minutes has elapsed since the start of the forum, ending the time for new questions from the audience, so we will just proceed now with the next round. The order will be Chris Peterson, then Mary Morrison, and then Brayden Rem. The question is about cannabis. Under current law, cannabis production facilities and dispensaries are legal in Minnesota. What city regulations do you support related to potential cannabis businesses? And go ahead, candidate Chris.
That's a really hard question, because I don't know what the city of Medina actually and its residents want right now, and I think to presume so at this state, given how new introducing cannabis is to the state of Minnesota, should be something that's thoughtfully considered. And frankly, if I were elected or had the opportunity to influence how it's adopted or if it is, I would, I would put it out to the residents themselves and get their opinions, because I know it's very attractive from a tax standpoint. There's a lot of money that can be driven from something like cannabis, among other vices, but I think it's something that really, as a city and as a nuance, we ought to actually explore more, but not make any hard decisions on until we have a little more time to analyze and get the public opinion on it.
Thank you. Candidate Brayden.
Yeah, thank you. The Planning Commission, which I chair, actually just had a public hearing on this issue and made some recommendations around ordinances, and what I'd say is, you know, the consensus that we came with is that we want to make sure that we're protecting our community and, you know, leveraging the maximum buffers that are allowed by law. There's not a lot within the statute that you can do as a locality based on how it has, how it has been passed by the legislature. But one of the things that we did want to protect is, as we look at cannabis retailers versus lower potency hemp retailers, making sure that we have a distinction between the two. Our local businesses, liquor stores, bars, et cetera, would be at a disadvantage if we were to treat that too harshly, and so what we recommended was to treat that similar to an alcohol establishment, so that our local businesses aren't disadvantaged compared to other communities, but to put a little bit more restriction on cannabis, being that it's a newer thing and that our city is, you know, a smaller rural city. That was important to us.
Thank you, and my apologies. You were supposed to go second, so I just noticed that I marked you down.
A little bit.
No, thank you. Actually, I agree with Brayden. I think the Planning Commission has done a good job of looking at this issue. I think the fact that Medina is small, we've got a small public safety department, it's not an issue that we want to be out in front of other larger communities on. We have limited commercial space in the city, and I think we want to not disadvantage our businesses, but we don't necessarily want to be the cannabis leader in the, in the West Metro, so I would go slow on it, and I appreciate the work that's already been done on it.
Okay, great. Thank you. For the next round of questions, and I will follow the correct order this time, it will be Brayden Rem, then Chris Peterson, then Mary Morrison. It is about new staffing. The city of Medina will have a new city administrator in 2025. What qualities would you like to see he, she, to bring to the city?
That's a great question, and I think this is underway right now, in fact, starting interviews soon, and so, you know, excited to have that position filled. Aaron, who's our interim city administrator, has been doing an awesome job and is wearing two hats, as finance director and city administrator, and it's been great to see that. As we look at what we want in a city administrator, they should be someone who can carry on the culture that we've had within our staff of maintaining, you know, a great environment for our staff, making sure that we're able to retain and recruit our city staff, and then, you know, ultimately, they should be someone who is responsive to the council and able to respond to the community as well. Our staff has a great ability to respond to community input and want to make sure that we're keeping that culture up, to make sure that we're giving high service to the citizens of Medina.
Great. Candidate Chris, please.
Well, I've been known our past city administrator, Scott. I think he did a great job, and he'll be missed. I think, I think it's tough with, with any city, a new city administrator. When we say maintaining culture, I think that's important, but I also think at times, especially in smaller cities, you can run sometimes the risk of having administrators running things without being as decisive as they may need to be, or leading by example, as they say. To say that a city administrator, unlike publicly-elected officials, they're running for a long time, they're going to be at the city likely for a very long time, and I think in that role, it is so important that I would be looking for somebody who truly is looking out for the best interest of the city, but is able to make hard decisions, not easy ones, when it comes to decisions that are going to affect the long-term stability of Medina.
Great. And candidate Mary.
I would be looking for someone who's got the best qualifications we can find with the financial acumen to run the city budget, working well with the city council. I would agree with Brayden that we have a great ethos among the staff now, and people tend to do their jobs and work independently, and I think it would be important that the city administrator supported that culture, because that's, that's worked well in Medina to date, so not changing everything up in terms of personnel or how, how much leeway people are, and independence to make their own decisions, someone who's a good administrator and also a good personnel supervisor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Next round of questions, the order will be Chris Peterson, then Mary Morrison, then Brayden Rem. And the question is, as council member, how will you handle conflicts of interest in terms of any personal investments and professional activities and city decisions regarding policies, ordinances, and development decisions? And go ahead, candidate Chris.
Well, I think this one applies to me the most, given of all the candidates, I probably actually have the most conflicts of interest, and I ran knowing that. When in doubt, I would always recuse myself personally, knowing our current state of affairs at all levels of government. I think being unbiased and not acting in self-interest is one of the most critical things. It would have been easy for me actually not to run, knowing those conflicts of interest, and so what I would actually do is, rather than look at those conflicts of interest as something that I'm going to be looked at with a microscope, I would take the experience I have being on the other side of the table, more than any of the other candidates, and in the shoes of the civilians living in Medina and the residents, and act, act as a helping hand, not for, to serve their interests or to serve mine, but to serve the best interests of Medina and make sure that Medina is, is keeping us all held accountable.
Thank you. And candidate Mary.
Well, I have no personal or professional conflicts with the city of Medina. You know, we don't own any property other than our house. I, I would see someone as, who's developing or having a contract with the city or something as being a problem for service on the city council, simply because I think it's hard to take one hat off and put on another, not just for that transaction, but for a general bias in general toward, you know, you know, trading off or wanting certain developments to go through. I just think it gets very messy, so my recommendation would be not to have people serving who have direct conflicts of interest, and if they do happen to run into one, that they would recuse themselves from the entire transaction.
Great. Thank you. And candidate Brayden.
I also only own my home here in Medina, but I do work for a company that has a store in Medina, and so if they were to come between, before us, it's a place where I would absolutely need to recuse myself and make sure that I, you know, didn't take part in that discussion, both for a personal ethical reason, but also because it's required of me. At the end of the day, I think that, you know, as we think about conflicts of interest, the place where this is the most important is in the 2050 comp plan process, where we're going to set the stage for development for the next 26 years from now, and just knowing that that's so inclusive and covers the entire city, I think it's really important to have an unbiased point of view as, you know, the council that will be ultimately helping decide and steer where that goes.
Great. Thank you. For the next round of questions, the order will be Brayden Rem, Chris Peterson, then Mary Morrison. It's about housing. The city of Medina's website states that the city plans for a diversity of housing, including single-family, townhomes, and multifamily dwellings, to support the long-term livability of the community. What do you see as the current housing needs in Medina, and what measures would you support, if any, to address those needs? And candidate Brayden.
Thank you. That's a great question, and on the Planning Commission, we've seen a lot of new housing and residential developments. I think the city's done a great job of balancing the types of housing that are here, from both multifamily and single-family, and also low-income in the southwest corner of the city where there's transportation infrastructure to support it. And so as a member of the city council, my goal would be to continue the slow development that we've seen in those ways, but making sure that we have the right balance of housing for the shortage that's out there today.
Great. And candidate Chris.
Well, I know a lot of, a lot of housing and growth is dictated by the Met Council. I think Medina has done a great job thus far of providing housing of different natures, as Brayden has suggested. I think going forward, every city in the West Metro right now is looking to build homes. Medina, I believe, has some of, obviously, the most valuable property where people will want to build, and I think it'll be critical that we, as a city council, maintain controlled growth and only, only advocating on behalf of the needs of Medina based on, not just the comp plan, but also the Met Council's recommendations, and ensuring that our city services can maintain the level of growth as well, as the more houses we get, the more fire we need, the more police we need, and that's one way to potentially burden the city over time.
Great. Thank you. And candidate Mary.
Yeah, I think Medina has done a great job in creating a diversity of housing opportunities over time slowly, and I would like to see that continue. I think some of our neighbors have grown very quickly and then run into bumps of not, services not catching up, or the infrastructure's not there, so I think we've done a good job with that and would want to continue on a very well-thought-out plan for growth, depending on the availability of infrastructure and zoning requirements, as well as working within the requirements of the Met Council and the comp plan.
Great. And candidate Brayden.
Answered that one already. No problem.
Counting is my favorite part here. Okay, thank you. Well, for the next question about, the order will be Mary Morrison, then it will be Brayden, then Chris Peterson. So for conduct at city council meetings, what skills do you bring to the position of city council member that will contribute to meetings being conducted with respect for public engagement? Please give examples of how you have been able to work productively with those who do not share your views. And go ahead, candidate Mary.
Thank you. Well, I practiced law for 35 years in large law firms and mostly working with nonprofit and community organizations, a lot of public-private ventures, and I think I have good experience in working with people who come to the table with different needs or interests or points of view, and what we were always looking for was a solution in the, in the public interest, one that satisfied all constituents, and I think that's a skill, as well as my legal background, that would provide collegiality and respect for other people's viewpoints, because ultimately, I think I'm pretty good at keeping the end in mind and not getting sidetracked by personal issues or small, smaller disagreements, but trying to keep the big picture in focus.
Thank you. Candidate Brayden.
You know, thinking about conduct at city council, one of the things that I've been able to do is lead the Planning Commission for the last two years, and during that time, we've had a lot of things come in front of us, small things like fences, bigger things like large developments, and I think it's most important to listen to the voice of the community and make sure that we remember who we're serving. In addition to that, I think, you know, as Mary mentioned, we are here to, to get a job done, and it's something that I think, you know, need to listen to others' point of views, but ultimately, this is something that I've demonstrated daily in my day job at a large corporation. There's a lot of conflicting points of view, and I like to make sure, again, that I'm hearing all of the input and then recommending the best solution based on that.
Great. And candidate Chris.
Well, as someone who's been working for a small family service business that's dealt with literally all types of customers, my own family, and a variety of interests, over 20 years, I've had to resolve, I'd say, more conflicts than potentially anybody in this room, just on a, on a low level of customer service. For the last three years, doing a development that has been approved in Medina, I've had to lead a team of architects, general contractors, engineers, legal, finance, all while having an interest that is ours with the city, but also having to balance that with the city, which has their own needs in a city I know as well as they do, I should say more than they do, and so it's always been in my nature to create resolutions, and even our irrigation system in the neighborhood where I've actually been serving the community. As a community member for the last eight years, I've been able to As a community member for the last eight years, I've been able to navigate that quite well.
Thank you. And this will be the final question, and the order will be Chris Peterson, then Braden Rem, then Mary Morrison. Is there an issue that wasn't discussed in this forum that you wish to address? And candidate Chris.
Well, I think one issue that was not addressed was the fire department. I know that over a decade, I know Mayor Martin here has done an excellent job amongst other city council people in navigating the West Metro fire departments. I know the Hamill Fire Department has been around for years, and I think that is an issue that is sometimes a bit of an elephant in the room, but it's an issue that I'd like to see addressed and considered, given the needs of it and what's coming up here over the next 10, 20 years in regards to how to ensure that the Hamill Fire Department is sufficiently maintained and allowed to thrive and continue to serve the growing needs of Medina population with some services that are a bit outdated.
And candidate Braden.
I'd agree with the fire department comment. I think there's another piece of that, too, where there's an upcoming, you know, contract with Long Lake that's going to need to be considered, and I think that's really important, and it could impact our budget pretty significantly as we think about some of the changes that are happening south of us. But one of the other things that was touched on very briefly is the city property on Willow and 55. I think that's an incredible opportunity for the city to do something really unique. We have an RFP out right now for a consultant as a city to help us figure out what the right thing and appropriate thing for a city of our size is in that space. And so again, as a city council, I think it'll be important to bring in the voices of the community, but also bring practical solutions for that space. And I'm really excited for the opportunity and the potential that that presents us in Medina.
Thank you. Candidate Mary.
Well, they hit my two thoughts. Yeah, the fire department issue, that it sounds like we're going to need to renegotiate some of the contracts, at least in the next year, and that could have a budget impact in making sure that we have adequate fire coverage for the entire city. The new piece of property will be an opportunity for Medina to shape its future even more significantly, because it will allow the city to decide with its residents what makes the best use of that property for the residents of the city, not leaving it to a private landowner to make that decision and come forward with a proposal. I guess the only other question I would have asked, or thought would be asked, was just the challenges we see in the next few years, and certainly, I would say, the comp plan and meeting our staffing, upcoming recruiting and retention requirements.
So now we'll call on you for a two-minute closing statement. The order is going to be Mary Morrison, then Braden Rem, then Chris Peterson. So go ahead, candidate Mary.
Thank you. I believe that I have the experience, both professionally and through my work with the Parks Commission, to be an effective city council member. I'm skilled in working with others to achieve common public goals, I'm a receptive listener, and I have the time and energy to devote to the city council. I would help lead Medina through upcoming changes relating to the growth of our community and the requirements of the Met Council 2050 Comprehensive Plan. I appreciate how collaborative and efficient Medina's government currently is. If elected, I will provide strong, independent leadership. I will work to preserve our beautiful open space, maintain and improve our city infrastructure, and ensure that new development aligns with Medina's vision and is not driven solely by the highest price or the most profitable use of available land for development. I hope to earn your support and the opportunity to serve Medina on its city council. I have a strong legal background, which I think is a desirable credential for the council's work. And I'm an independent member of the community with no inherent conflicts of interest in my work or property ownership. I'm well-established in the community, and I and my family have deep roots in the area. Kathy Martin, our mayor, has endorsed me for city council, as has our previous mayor, Liz Weir. I hope to have your support on November 5th, and thank you.
And now, candidate Braden Rem.
Perfect. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. For the past four years, I've had the privilege of serving on the Medina Planning Commission, including two years as chair. In this volunteer role, I've worked diligently to ensure that our city's growth respects the needs and desires of our residents. I am free from conflicts of interest, as I do not own any businesses, nor am I involved in active development projects within Medina. My service is entirely dedicated to the community, free from personal or financial bias. Throughout my tenure, I focus on protecting our open spaces and parks, advocating for development that aligns with our community's values, and ensuring that our city's strategic vision remains balanced and inclusive. This experience has given me a deep understanding of the complexities and challenges that we face as we plan for the future. My professional background in business management gives me a strong understanding of financial processes and budget management, which makes me well-positioned to help lead Medina through the intricacies of the city budget process. I will ensure that our resources are allocated efficiently and effectively to serve our community, and work to keep our tax rates one of the lowest in Hennepin County. I'm also committed to public safety as a top priority, ensuring that our police, fire, and emergency services have the resources they need to protect our community is essential. I am committed to investing appropriately to keep Medina a safe and secure place for all residents. During my campaign, I've had the pleasure of meeting many of you and listening to your concerns and hopes for our city. I'm committed to bringing your voices with me to City Hall and showing that your perspectives are represented in every decision we make. If elected, I will represent residents of Medina with integrity and transparency. I will continue to prioritize our community's needs through transparent governance and working collaboratively with residents to create a future for the city that we can all be proud of. Thank you for consideration, and I hope to earn your vote.
And candidate Chris Peterson.
As a child, some of my earliest childhood memories were made of Medina, but back then it was known as Hamill. We grew up in Plymouth, and I always knew when we were getting to Medina, Hamill, because the dust from the pickup truck would kick up as we turned north on the Mohawk Drive on that gravel road, long, long before Polaris World Headquarters moved in. A lot has changed since then, and as somebody who's been literally living, working, and volunteering in the community for my entire life, I've seen Medina in a way that I believe a lot of people would like to see Medina in their public representation. I am not somebody who is as polished, I would say, as the other candidates. And any concerns over my conflict of interest, I would answer with saying that I actually believe that a lot of the conflicts of interest that people talk about would not be an issue for me, not only because I would recuse myself, but I actually have the real experience and a track record of working in the community, alongside the community, engaging with it and the community members, getting to know them, getting to understand them, sitting on the table with them on both sides of it, not just governing them, but empathizing with them, relating to them. And as somebody who does have the history and experience that I do, I would be independently representing the city in a way that I think that would add a lot of value, that frankly a lot of cities don't always get from somebody like myself who would run, who frankly doesn't need it for any other reason than I'm here to serve the people of Medina, not because it's incorporated in comp plan, but because it's something that I've appreciated as the rural heritage of Medina has been for my entire life, and I would have held those values because of it. And I think I have a track record to prove it as much as any candidate sitting here.
Great. Thank you. Well, this concludes the Medina City Council Candidate Forum. We close with several thank yous. First, on behalf of the League of Women Voters, please join me in thanking the candidates for being part of the democratic process by running for office and being willing to serve in our community. Thank you also for the League of Women Voters volunteers, our audience here, and those viewing this event virtually, for your participation in this candidate forum. Thank you to the Medina City staff for supporting this event and recording tonight's forum. On-demand viewing can be accessed at l w v w p a dot org. For additional election information, we encourage you to visit vote411.org, the League of Women Voters award-winning one-stop shop, where voters can register to vote, find their polling place, and learn how candidates stand on issues. Please remember to vote in the November 5th election by absentee ballot or in person. On the November ballot, Minnesota voters will be asked to reauthorize or end a constitutional amendment allocating 40% of the state lottery proceeds to the Environment and Natural Resources Trust Fund. Over 50% of voters must vote yes to approve the constitutional protection of the system. Leaving the question blank counts as a no vote. Please be sure to look for the amendment and vote. Early voting is underway. Your vote is your choice. LWV welcomes new members, both men and women, at l w v w p a dot org. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Nice to meet you.
Absolutely. I'm sorry.
Yes, Monica.
That is.